If I can have everyone's attention. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. If everyone could come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
If I can have everyone's attention, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. If everyone could come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Weiss, and Pedea, ten members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, council is in session, and for a very special order of business this morning, I'd like to recognize our council president, Alex Pedea.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and colleagues. For those of you who've been around this building long enough, you'll remember Gail. Need I say more? This is a sad day for many of us, who were used to seeing Gail sitting right there for so many years, as the council to the council, if you will, the city attorney, staffing the council meetings. Gail is now retiring after many, many years of service to the city, which brought her not only to the council chambers, staffing the council, but also through the budget and finance committees. She assisted with planning issues, fire department issues, and on and on and on. She's here with her family, I'll let her introduce them, but colleagues, as she is leaving the city and entering retirement, it was an easy decision for me to make to want to invite Gail in for the formal presentation of a resolution, just thanking her for her years of service to the city of L.A. I also think, for those of you who were involved with the charter reform commission, that she was a staff person to the appointed charter revision board that was established from 95 through 97. So she's got a lot of tales to tell about the good days and some not-so-good days in the city. But Gail, thank you for everything. Personally, thank you because you were there when I first became president, helped me so much, and we're going to miss you.
There are a few council members who would also like to say something. Let me recognize Councilmember Grohl.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Alex, for bringing Gail in today. Gail was that face sitting up here, and always calm. She never lost her cool as she sat with fifteen council members, asking her questions, pushing her buttons to say, "We want to do this," but giving us always excellent advice. She never hesitated. She was always there, and Gail and I have known each other for over twenty years, when I worked in the mayor's office. And she was always a person I felt I could call and ask some of the tough questions, but also a friend. And so, and I've gotten to know her mother as well through my election, and just think that you are such a wonderful, have been such a wonderful asset to the city of Los Angeles. I did tell her that she looked relaxed, comfortable after retiring. Is that what we're going to look like, hopefully, after we retire someday? But we're just so happy that you were part of the city family for such a long period of time, and you really made a difference and had an imprint on so many actions that we've taken here. And you were just a joy to work with, and we call you not only our attorney, but our friend. So congratulations on your retirement.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to just thank Gail for all of her work. It's not easy to hold court with fifteen kings and queens, and I say that respectfully. But as a person who's been able to, as a fly in the wall, watch all the dynamics and see you just hold your ground, because you're protecting the city, because you're looking out for the city, it's not always easy. And to see you be amongst the giants of the past, who are here for many years as council members, and now with term limits, being that coach that advises us as to how we best, how can we best approach our issues. You've been that steward for us. I want to thank you so much, and for your gentleness and firmness, because you did hold your ground, even though someone was yelling in your face. You still say, "This is the way it has to be," and it was done that way. So I want to congratulate your family for the strong support, and for all your hard work for us, and I look forward to seeing you in the future, coming back, and, you know, maybe you will come back, right? Okay, great. So congratulations, and may your golden years be very, very rewarding.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Talking about the golden years, Gail's mom, ninety-two years old, who watches us on television, and he was here, "Why don't you stand up next to your daughter, so we can get you on television, please?" Come on, we've got to get the camera on you, come on. Ninety-two years old, a docent at the Japanese Garden Center in the San Fernando Valley. Mother and daughter. See, this is a lovely picture. Resident of the San Fernando Valley. Gail, we started out at the Charter Commission, along with Kelsey Rahon and some of our other elected officials that were on the Charter Commission, and you held that. We had no staff, except for you. We had no facilities. Thanks for the Water and Power Department, we used their facility. And we had no budget. We, I mean, we were really baling wire and bubble gum to keep it together. And we had those late-night meetings, trying to get that charter established, and we were successful with that after all that time. And then I get elected, Janice Hahn gets elected, and here we see you. Well, not with the goatee like this man has, but you held that spot for many years, championing the activities here, and telling us when we couldn't talk about something during executive session, and when we could speak about issues. And your dedication to the city is well documented, well recognized. And I just want to thank you for the support you've given over the years. And I didn't know, Alex, it was 1995 we did the charter? Nineteen ninety-seven. I mean, because it seems like another century, but it was a, it was a long time ago. But I thank you, whatever it was. And we're trying to figure out if Ed Reyes is a king or a queen, but that was, Greg Smith asked me that. Is he a king or a queen?
Mr. Zine, you're talking about.
But we know that, but we know that, Gail, you are a queen. You are a, your mom's a princess for the city of Los Angeles. Don't cut the mic, this is good. And we're on a roll, so keep on going. You've got your lovely family here. I wish you well in retirement. You've dedicated a lot to the city of Los Angeles. We're all thankful, and the people of Los Angeles are thankful. And when your mom watches us tonight, there she is, watching it, City View. So God bless you in the future endeavors, with your wonderful husband here, who's standing by your side, and your family. It's a great day when you can retire and still be healthy, and enjoy those checks that you put all that money into for retirement, and enjoy the benefits of retirement. And make sure that you help your mom out as a docent over at the Japanese Center, because it's a wonderful place in the San Fernando Valley. The best to you and the family in the future. Again, thanks for all the help you've given me personally. Thank you.
Councilmember Perry.
Gail, I just want to say congratulations, and it's really great to see you standing here with your mom today, and also with your family. And I've been so appreciative of working with you over the years, and your common sense, your eloquence, and your very warm approach in dealing with controversy was always appreciated, and I think a model that we could all emulate in many ways here, at least three days a week. You will be missed, and I hope that you do stay involved, but you've earned this time, and I do hope that you, your mom, and your entire family really go out there and enjoy yourselves, and you will be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And, Gail, before we give you the microphone, let me just say that for thirty years, working with you, it's been fantastic. And for those of you who've just, I'm on the council, have just known you here as the council's attorney, you cut your teeth on some very hard areas in the planning department, and you were the, a city attorney for the Plum Committee for many, many years, and helped the city feel its way with neighborhoods and developers to really what made sense in the long term. And I appreciate that a lot, because I know I learned an awful lot from you, and I appreciate that. And I think Mr. Weiss would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I want to join everybody in wishing you the very best. It's been a real pleasure working with you, and you're a wonderful lawyer, you're a wonderful person. Congratulations to you, and thanks for everything, Gail.
Thank you.
Gail, your turn.
First of all, I want to thank the council for this, and Alex especially. This is unexpected and wonderful. And I learned a lot from all of you, too. Cindy and I did a lot of land use matters together, and I think we all grew together, especially during the charter. I want to introduce my husband also, Bob Bounis, who was basically a rock for those ten years that I was in council. I would come home on Friday and go, "Don't talk to me, just make dinner." And he knew, and on Saturday, everything was okay. And my mom, who, watch out, she's going to hitch up for money for the Japanese garden. She is a constituent, so. But I, I also want to thank Frank Orosco, who backed me up all the time that I was in council, and there was never a time when I had to say, "Gee, I really need you to be there," because he always, whenever you need me, I'm there." And that was very important. But one of the things I learned during my almost twenty-seven years with the city was that the city attorney's office is made up of really wonderful people. They're not politicians, they're career deputies, and they are dedicated, and they are here to help you. And I am proud that I was one of them for that amount of time. And again, I thank you for this.
Thank you, Gail, congratulations. We have another special presentation today, so let me call on Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Today, I am joined by members of the American Heart Association to talk about a very important issue, heart disease and its effects on women. Diseases of the heart are the nation's leading cause of death and stroke, I'm sorry, death, and stroke is the third-leading cause of death. One in five females in the United States has a form of cardiovascular disease. Heart attacks, strokes, and other cardiovascular diseases claim the lives of more than half a million women each year, more than the next seven causes of death combined, and nearly twice as many as all forms of cancer, including breast cancer. Every year, in the past twenty years, more women than men have died of heart disease, stroke, and other cardiovascular diseases. Women account for more than fifty-five percent of deaths, or sixty-five thousand more deaths per year than men. Approximately one out of every two-point-four women's death results from heart disease, stroke, and other cardiovascular disease. The month of February is designated as American Heart Month, and then last year, I joined the Heart Association to kick off their Go For Red, or Go Red For Women campaign. Go Red For Women has been launched to encourage women to pay attention to their hearts, and to help them live longer, stronger lives by reducing their risks. So I, on behalf of our mayor, James Han, and the entire city council, I would like to present to the American Heart Association this proclamation that proclaims February 4, 2005, to be Wear Red For Women Day in the city of Los Angeles, and urge everyone to wear red in recognition of family, friends, neighbors, and all those who've suffered from heart disease, in support of the importance of the ongoing fight against this disease and strokes. And I encourage everyone to join in recognizing this important event today. I'd like to present this to you, and ask you to say a few words.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the American Heart Association, I want to thank Mayor Han, the city council, and particularly Jan Perry, for supporting us not only in this initiative, but in initiatives all the way along the road. This initiative in particular, Go Red For Women, and February 4, which is where, the day everybody's going to wear red, I want to put it in a little bit more dramatic context than the facts that Jan read. Not only for the city council people, who want to be informed as they talk to their constituents, but for all the people who are here. The stereotype of the person who is most at risk for heart disease and stroke is the overweight, breadwinner, and it's a male, stressed out, and he keels over from a heart attack. That stereotype is wrong, because in 2002, for the first time in history, more women died of heart disease and stroke than men in this country. And the women dying of heart disease and stroke do not look like that stereotype. They're not overweight, they're not dragging themselves filled with stress. And for that reason, not only don't the women expect heart disease and stroke, their physicians don't look for heart disease and stroke. That's why it's so important for people to understand the level that heart disease and stroke are playing in women's lives. I counted how many women are in this room today. There are about forty women in this room right now. We have four women on the city council. If we take everybody in this room, and we add their mothers, their daughters, their sisters, who are still living, we'll come up with a rough number of maybe three hundred women who are represented here. Of those three hundred women, fifty have heart disease, or have heart disease now. And five hundred thousand are going to die in this country, women, this year. That's about one every second. Both my parents died of cancer. My dad died when he was forty-seven, my mom died when she was sixty-one. I should be on the American Cancer Society. But I'm on the Heart Association, because as scary and as terrible as cancer is, women who are worried about dying of breast cancer, as an example, five times more women will die of heart disease or stroke. More women will die of heart disease and stroke than all cancers combined. Valentine's Day is coming up. Particularly husbands are always trying to figure out, "What can I get my spouse to make her feel good for Valentine's Day?" I've got a suggestion for everybody, not just the men, but for the women, for daughter, sister, mother. I want you to wear red on February 4. I want you to take a digital camera and take, put on a self-timer, and I want you to take a picture of yourself, and have a sign that says, "I love you." And that's what you're going to give to the women in your life for Valentine's Day this year. So anyway, thank you again, city council, the mayor's office, and Jan Perry, for supporting the Heart Association, for making February 4 Wear Red Day, and for supporting the Go Red Initiative. Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that awareness, Councilmember Perry.
We have red pins for all the city councils.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, why don't we go through the agenda?
First order of business, Madam President, is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Smith seconds, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are also approved.
Madam President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Let's go through the agenda and call the item special, then we'll go back to public comment.
Item number one on the agenda is an item noticed for public hearing.
We do have cards on that, so we will call item one special.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through eleven, and on items four and five, committee reports have been submitted on those two items.
All right, members, items two through eleven are before us. Are there any items at the council that I'd like to call special? Mr. Cardenas.
Item number four, special.
Item four is called special. Anything else, two through eleven? If not, those matters are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, twelve through thirty-six. Ten votes are required for consideration, and also to let council know, on item number sixteen, Bureau of Street Lighting has requested that matter be received and filed, and there is a correction on item number twenty-eight, the amount should be fifty-four thousand sixty dollars.
All right, those items are before us. Any specials members? Any items special? If not, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, those are approved.
Next items are the closed session, items thirty-seven through forty-five. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, we'll hold those on the desk. I believe that brings us back to the public comment. So let me now call those cards that have been received for the public comment period, starting with Mr. Al Piantanida, Christine Anthony, and Mervyn Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Al Piantanida. I live in the San Fernando Valley, in the city of Arlita, and Councilman Cardenas is our councilman, which we care about and like very much. I live in a townhouse complex of seventy units, of which we pay huge sewer charge rates, and we are not against this present sewer charge rate. We have a central metering system in our complex where we pay total water for every unit, no unit separate water meters. We have a strict water conservation program, and what we are happy about- We have a strict water conservation program, and what we are happy about, we've had new sewer lines installed over the past few years, a good street drainage system put in, and we are benefiting from this rate already. And we are totally backing the public works on the sewer rate increase, and I'd just like to see our councilmen work very hard to make sure our area in East San Fernando Valley is taken care of. And if your public works department, they're very informative and very helpful. I've had street lights out, they've been fixed within two days, and we attended a meeting on this, and the people that handled it were very knowledgeable, and really gave us the right information. Again, we're totally backing this sewer rate increase, and we just hope that everything goes good. One other quick comment that I went talking with homeowners within our area is, with the sewer rate bill being on the DWP bill, a lot of people concerned that this is part of the DWP, and with all the problems that have been happening lately, a lot of people think this money is going to settle some of the DWP problems, and I try to reassure them that if you can be a little more specific on your, when you state that public works in the sewer system is totally different than DWP, it would be a great help. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
We'll consider your comments when we take up item number one. This is the public comment for items not on the agenda. Christine Anthony, followed by Mervyn Evans.
Good morning. You may recall, a week ago, there was a tremendous disaster in the neighborhood of Atwater Village. It happens that I live a block away from that disaster, and for 17 hours that day, there were helicopters, as many as six or seven of them, circling that situation. I'd like to perhaps suggest that you consider a survey of the rescue workers to see if, how they may have been affected by the sound of those helicopters. I found myself shouting to my neighbors on the street, just to be able to talk to them when they were standing right next to me, that if it's possible that the sound of those helicopters could have hindered their efforts to rescue people who were in rubble and trying to make a slight sound to be heard and to be rescued, then I think that there should be a consideration of some controls put on that traffic, and whether it's enforceable or whether it's voluntary, I think it's something that may also, you could go so far as to suggest the La Conchita disaster was affected by the same situation, and that is what I'd like to suggest that some committee takes that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mervyn Evans, who will be followed by Ed Iogenis, Luvanios, Rumbos, and the South Central Farmers.
Hello, my name is Mervyn Evans, I'm a resident of Los Angeles. First off, I want to say thank you to all of the people who've come out today and actually getting involved. It's good to see you here, and we're glad to hear. We have submitted a letter to the President of the United States calling for a suspension of 50% of the 1B program, employment-based visas. Why is that important to Los Angeles? There will probably be 2,500 to 3,500 1B visas next year in Los Angeles. Those jobs could go to qualified individuals in Los Angeles. But let me tell you what I really want, and I want Mr. Cardenas, I want Mr. Padilla, I want Mr. Villagroza, and I want Mr. Reyes to forward to the White House a balanced immigration policy. A policy that highlights the benefits and the advantages of our immigrant community, that highlights the advantages that they do for our economy, that highlights and properly promotes what happens with the immigrant economy. The immigrant economy and the immigrants in this city add value to our city. They make our city a better place. We need a balanced policy that does not pander to racism or the cancer of bigotry. We need a policy that openly encourages, from the federal level, driver's licenses and insurance policies by all immigrants. We need a policy that looks-
Evans, can I ask you to sum up? We've got other speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Mervyn Evans, and I want to say thank you very much again. Thank you again.
All right, the next group, from the South Central Farmers.
Señores concejales, y usted señor presidente municipal, hemos-
Councilmembers, and present councilmember?
Ediohenes Luviano Rumbo.
Perdón? No entiendo.
Ediohenes Luviano Rumbo, es mi nombre.
My name is Ediohenes Luviano Rumbo.
Por eso, los motivos que estamos aquí, y la esperanza de ustedes, como son autoridades, hemos venido más protestando que no los quitan esos lugares que es-
The reason why we're here is to protest and say, please don't take our spaces. Those are spaces for?
Por eso, esos lugares que son las tierras de la 41 y la Alameda, estamos trabajándolos, sembrando.
Those lands and soil that's on 41st and Alameda, we're working the soil, we're seeding it, we're planting that soil.
Producto y alimentación para toda la comunidad.
We're planting product, fruit for the entire community.
Por eso, como autoridades, necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes.
That's why, with you, your authority, we need the help of your community.
Y nos esperamos la esperanza que les den la mano o la mano derecha.
And we're waiting for you to give us your right hand, the hope, to help us.
Por eso, señores, yo les voy a decir mi vida cómo fue cuando llegué a este país.
That's why, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to tell you how my life was when I came to this country.
No me da vergüenza decírselo como autoridades.
I'm not embarrassed to tell you, as you, with authority.
Yo no sé una letra.
I don't know how to read.
Pero si mis padres me enseñaron a trabajar las tierras y a respetar lo ajeno.
But my parents showed me work the soil and respect the things that aren't mine.
Okay, could I ask you to please sum up?
Por eso, no más tantas otras palabras, señora.
I just want to say a couple more words, ma'am.
Tengo 45 años viviendo en este país y nunca he sido arrestado.
I've been living here 45 years, and I've never been arrested.
Porque vine a trabajar.
Because I came here to work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, city councilmembers. My name is Nadine Diaz, a USC graduate student, and also the chair for the California State Central Committee for Assembly District 46. I am here on behalf of the USC graduate students who are in support of the South Central Farmers, and we are willing to work with all of you for the betterment of the people in the community, along with the councilwoman Jan Perry. Thank you.
Real quick, again, one more time. Miguel Angel Perez, Boy High School Alliance, Los Angeles Land Use Coalition, stands in support in the struggle with the South Central Farmers, 41st and Alameda. Aquí estamos y no nos vamos, tierra y libertad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another group of cards that were submitted in public comment. Let me call Candido Morris, Sandra Miranda, Debbie Gould. Please come forward. Also, Exocito Baker, Mark Conan, George Martinez, Joe Sina, Stanley Frost, Steve Woodson, and
Good morning, Madam President, councilmembers. So many times we've heard people come before this council and state that you don't listen, that you're doing other things, and that you really don't hear the cries of people that come here before you. We are here to let you know and to thank you, because we've, for over a year now, close to a year, we've come to you and we've asked that you check into a situation with the city of Los Angeles and the procurement process, and the way small businesses were being left out of the process. We, as small vendors, we as residents of the city of Los Angeles, would love to give you a hand for listening to us. I believe that if you really take a look at it, you'll see that the truth came out, that there were problems, and had it not been for you, this wouldn't come true. The only issue I see left is the retaliation. We cannot allow people that are good city workers to be punished because they see a problem, they bring it forward, and then their managers punish them for that. Please, that's the one thing that we'd like. Councilman Cardenas, Councilwoman Cindy McCauskey, Councilwoman Janice Hahn, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You made the city of Los Angeles truly the smallest business capital in the world. They would just like to quickly say things, real quick, and we'll move on.
All right, my name is Joe Sina, you've seen me before, and I do applaud you, thank you. You were listening. Last time I was here, I asked you if you weren't. The only thing I would like to say is when a new contract is signed, please, please, put some money aside in the budget for the small businesses so we can continue to do work. Otherwise, we're back to where we started from a year ago. Again, thank you, and I applaud you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Conan. I also want to thank the council for all of its work and consideration in helping us promote small business in Los Angeles. Thank you.
This is one of our great city workers.
My name is Michael Gibson. I'm a custodial supervisor, custodial services attendant, and I'd like to thank you for your cooperation. Products that we use are very user-friendly, it makes our job a whole lot easier, and the tenants that we work for, they can appreciate them too. Thank you very much.
Okay, and the last thing, everybody else, then? Then I'll finish, I'll send them. Or do you want to say? Okay, he's going to say one thing. Just two last speakers, Madam President, and we'll be done.
Good morning. My name is Stan Frost, company represents Hygienic Services. I appreciated both Mr. McCauskey and Mr. Cardenas for listening to us Monday. It was a straight shot, and let's see where it leads us to. Once again, thank you.
My name is Sandra Miranda, and I want to thank you, councilmembers, and we have a speech to deliver today. We all gathered here today as city workers and vendors to give special thanks to Councilwoman Toni Cardenas, Councilwoman Janice Hahn, and Councilwoman Cindy McCauskey. Sorry about that. And we would also like to thank the other councilmembers and the mayor for not turning a blind eye to our issues with DWP, for not letting us down as the American workers and the taxpayers. We are all here today to let you know that as our leaders, you reached into the future for tomorrow's generation, to tell them that people matter, for what we do today will be tomorrow's history, to cherish one another like the rain that nourishes the soil throughout the world, for not letting one sole source vendor control the water of the well, nor the abuse, nor the retaliation of an independent authority to continue, to restore integrity, dignity, and respect, to bring change to the city of Los Angeles, to keep the American dream alive, to let the American people of Los Angeles and taxpayers know that as individuals we should not be taken advantage of, and we all deserve a place in the world. There should be a new charter, a charter of integrity, morals, and values. Should these policies and procedures and contracts not meet these charters, then these policies and procedures and contracts should not go forward. I would like to address DWP management and their leadership, to remind them to build a great, to remind them to build a company of greatness. You must reach out to your workers with trust, respect, and integrity. When you call on your workers to wear many different hats and climb Mount Everest and go beyond their call of duty with little or no tools due to the downsides of DWP, doing the job of many people, you do not launch an investigation and blind people and follow them for months on end, to take their jobs away, nor to threaten to take their jobs away. Why would any management of any business, private, government-owned, as combined individuals, throw over 200 years of service and experience and destroy the same people who built and made that company? As managers, you must understand that great leaders are not born, they are made. No one is born into great leadership. It is an individual choice that one must work on. Last but not least, we would like to thank Mr. Ron Deen. Let us not forget that through greatness and love of a higher power throughout the world, that you and I will always matter. Thank you.
That does conclude our public comment. Thank you, Candido.
Madam President, again, we would just like to you, give you a big hand, applause-
Thank you.
-for the kindness and greatness of you. Thank you very much.
That does close our public comment, and before we go to item one, I'm going to call item four out of order, and recognize Councilmember Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas? Mr. Cardenas, item four.
Members, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the community of Sun Valley for letting my office know that we need to do more to protect the environment out there. What this item has to do with is air quality monitoring, and also information gathering from the constituents in Sun Valley. And I'd also like to thank someone else, Council President Alex Padilla, for allowing my office, because when I got into office, a particular fund didn't have any money in it, but I realized that Alex Padilla's office did have some of that money, and they were willing to give us $100,000 so we can embark on this project. And I just wanted to thank Council President Alex Padilla for that generosity and for that spirit of being neighborly and making sure that just because his boundaries stop at a certain place doesn't mean that projects that need to happen shouldn't happen. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the community, and also to thank Councilman Alex Padilla and my staff and everyone for bringing us this far. Now we have $100,000 worth of good work to do, and with that information, we're going to be able to hopefully do many wonderful things for Sun Valley and help protect the environment, and help harness the activity that's going on there to make sure that into the future, we have less harmful effects on the community, on the residents, on the children, on the seniors that we're having today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti? Oh, Ms. Garcetti, Mr. Padilla?
The other Garcetti. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, thank you for the thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Colleagues, I just wanted to stand up because I don't know exactly how long ago it's been, maybe about a year or so, when we saw Councilmember Cardenas introduce a motion to roll out this initiative to create an environmental justice zone or area in the Sun Valley community. Now, while technically it's not part of my district any longer, I did represent portions of Sun Valley prior to redistricting, so I'm very familiar with the historical challenges, the environmental, and environmental justice concerns that occur in Sun Valley. And as Mr. Cardenas knows, Ms. Gruel knows, and I know full well, a lot of the communities, especially in the East Valley, are pretty seamless. You know, people, although we're proud, whether you live in Sun Valley, or Pacoima, or Lakeview Terrace, or Sunland, or in one of the specific communities, you know, you move across the borders, you visit family, you visit friends, and you don't recognize it as a different city, or even as a different world. So we're one united community out there, and so the environmental problems that exist out there also don't stop necessarily at a particular intersection or particular community border. When Mr. Cardenas approached me for funding for this survey, he explained how this is really the first step in moving towards the environmental justice, and in some ways, sort of payback to the community for what they've been asked to endure for so many years. Landfills, mining operations, and even, yes, even Department of Water and Power Generating Station out there. You have communities in the Sun Valley, Pacoima area, where residential communities have now encroached upon heavy impact, industrial uses, and vice versa. And so it's, you know, I think, great news for the community of Sun Valley that in- And so it's, you know, I think, great news for the community of Sun Valley that in Councilmember Cardenas, they have a champion, they have a leader who's going to look at not only what to do from today forward, but going back in history and finding out what really is going on. This survey is the first step in assessing what's out there, what needs to be done so we can put the proper remediation programs in place. And Mr. Cardenas, just want to let you know that Ms. Perry was very supportive and helpful to an environmental quality committee earlier today. Thank you.
Let me recognize Ms. Councilmember Perry.
I just wanted to thank you very much, Council President. As your representative to the AQMD, I wanted to suggest and be happy to follow up on your behalf that you get the AQMD to come out to your district and set up for you or adjoining districts, the Clean Air Congress, and allow them to do the footwork to help organize your community stakeholders. And it's an effective way to be able to disseminate information and to help people empower themselves more with greater access to information. And I'd just like to offer myself as one who's willing to assist you in making sure that that happens.
Councilmember Grul.
Thank you. And I teased Alex. I said, so you have extra money. Okay, my district isn't far from yours either, but we have worked together on trails and other issues that are of common interest. But I also want to thank Councilmember Cardenas because we share Sun Valley. He is the majority of Sun Valley, but it is a community that has been greatly impacted over the years with a lot of industrial uses, dumps, you name it. It's had a little bit of everything, and I think this is a great way for us to be able to document this information and to be able to provide, hopefully, the necessary resources and to say its impact in not only Sun Valley, but the entire San Fernando Valley and the entire city as a whole. So congratulations on your success. And Alex, we'll sit down and look where you have more money on a couple of things. But thank you very much, Ms. Ms. Councilmember.
Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you, Ms. Grul, for your support and also for your advice. In addition to that, I'd like to remind the reason why I wanted to make sure we commented on this today, that today's effort is a culmination of the hard work of the community. But many times, our community says, we'd like to do these things, these are the things that we need, but we don't have the resources. And in this case, the resources is the $100,000. And with that $100,000, I'd also like to thank the Department of Environmental Affairs for their hard work up to this point and the hard work that they're going to help us with into the future. In addition to that, we need these resources so we can assist AQMD, the Air Quality Management District for our area, so that they can bring their experts and their PhDs to be able to do the testing and then give us the information so we can take that out there and use it and protect the community. And another thing, I'd just like to once again thank the community of Sun Valley because this is a leadership event today. This is where we're going to be doing this for the first time for the city of Los Angeles in our community of Sun Valley. But once we do this, this is a blueprint that we can take in other parts of the city. And for all we know, people can use it in other parts of the country. It's a good thing. And once again, I want to say thank you to the community for asking my office to please provide some kind of solution, and together, we're providing this as a solution, and we're going to have some wonderful results, hopefully, not too much bad news, but whatever we get from it, we're going to be able to protect ourselves, we're going to be able to protect the environment and protect the community and duplicate this in other parts of the city, the county, and the country.
Thank you. Item four is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. We will send it forthwith. Members, that now brings us back to item number one. We do have a required public hearing on this matter, but I think it would probably be worthwhile to have a presentation first by the staff. So let me invite the staff up.
Rita Robinson, Bureau of Sanitation. It's with great pleasure this morning that we come to you to discuss and to present to you the information regarding the rate increase for the SEM. I know that sewage in the cities or sewers in the city are of great importance to all of you as it is to all of us, and during the recent storms, we saw just how important the work that we've done on our infrastructure of the sewers was. The completion of the ESIS project was an incredible increase in our functionality in the city and our efficiency in the city with regard to sewer spills. And we know that the communities in those areas that are impacted are greatly encouraged by the work that the Bureau has put itself into. And I'd like to just take a moment in terms of admiring not only the work of the council and the mayor, but also the work of the Bureau of Sanitation staff who have dedicated themselves with regard to making sure that everyone was informed about this project, about the sewer rate increase and the outreach that we did in the community. Our wastewater treatment group headed by Barry Bergerman has done a great and outstanding job and a job that's not too exciting of cleaning sewers. We know what a job that might be, and we know that his staff has done an outstanding job in wastewater collection. And also, our wastewater engineering staff has done an outstanding job in outreach. And one of my staff will be here, Robert Tannowitz, will be giving the presentation regarding the sewer rate increase, the background of it, the functionality of it, how we got here with helping you with regard to this in the public. And if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. We sent out this information to all of you ahead of time so that you would have it and be able to form any questions that you had. But I'd very much like to commend the staff of the Bureau of Sanitation and the Department of Public Works for all the work that they've done in this area and the great strides that the city has made with regard to our infrastructure and sewage.
Good morning. Robert Tannowitz, Bureau of Sanitation. Just as a little background on the lawsuit, it was as a result of a 1998 El Nino's overflow in our sewer system. And there was a lawsuit filed by the San Monica Bay Keepers back in 1999. In the year 2001, it was joined by U.S. EPA, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and citizens groups from South LA. We were set for trial in April of 2004. The amount of penalties and upgrades that was being sought was $550 million in penalties and over $6 billion in upgrades, which would have meant to triple our fees. What we were able to work with the plaintiffs is to come up with a settlement agreement that actually will benefit both the city of LA and its citizens and its health and welfare, in that we built the plan on our ongoing sewer rehab program. The settlement also eliminated any open end commitments for ballooning costs so that we could actually have a cost certain on the program. There was no spill reduction standard, although the Bureau is dedicated and committed to reducing spills throughout the city. It also prevented additional trial litigation costs. The settlement agreement terms basically were to enhance our inspection and our replacement and cleaning. We were going to inspect 600 miles annually. We're going to clean 2,800 miles of sewer. Out of that, which would mean every three years, the complete system would be clean. We are committed to renewing 60 miles of sewers per year. This is the local system that affects every neighborhood in the city. And we also are committed to doing more odor control measures. Prior actions, the council, on June 30th, authorized the Bureau and the City Attorney's Office to enter into a settlement agreement. On August 6th, the agreement was filed with the court and we announced it publicly. On October 29th, the agreement was approved and entered by the court. The court reviewed it and saw that it was a fair settlement. And on November 23rd, the city, this council, authorized us to initiate the notification process of Prop 218 and the five-year rate increase. The sewer rate increase will allow us to continue building on the program that we've already started and also to finance the additional work that needs to happen. We'll need an additional $425 million over the next five years of this 10-year agreement to fund the additional $36 million in expenses and both cleaning and replacing sewers. The sewer rate increase, we look at a typical household, which is all the households in the city, and we come up with a typical cost. We'll increase $1.75 of the monthly charge per year. So we'll go from a $21.37 rate up to $29.97 rate. And how do we compare, even with the largest 50 cities, we are currently in the middle. These are based on 2002 rates. We just got the information for 2004, and we'll update that. But we'll be, and we'll move up to about the third way up on this list. So even with the rate increase, we're still not outrageously high. The benefits, again, to the citizens of the city of LA would be healthy and safe neighborhoods, ensure a better quality of life, cleaner water, healthier beaches, and less risk to exposure of bacteria and other foreign objects. This next slide, I'd like to really talk about, we did, we heard the council in many of our committee meetings and the council meetings about reaching out to the neighborhoods and to the constituents to talk about the rate increase. We did a press event on August 6th. We sent out notices regarding the settlement and necessary rate increases to all the community groups. We also notified all the council offices. We gave additional information to the council so they could send out to their own constituents or their own groups. We issued two press releases and responded to numerous media inquiries. The information was posted on the city's website. We mailed out $1.5 million, oh, sorry, $1.5 million direct notices to all the residents and property owners and business owners in the city of LA. Phone calls were made to all interested community groups and neighborhood councils, and we offered our services to go out and brief the neighborhood councils and other community groups. We've conducted 57 one-on-one briefings to community groups throughout the city. I also would like to mention also on the outreach, we also did the seven planning years, we did community-wide briefings. This is example of some of the outreach material. We sent out the Prop 218 notices. We also had information sheets that we sent out to the communities. These are just some slides showing some of the actual community meetings that we went to. And I will say that all the neighborhood council, community councils and other interested groups were really appreciative of the fact that we came out and met with them and explained what the whole process was and what was needed in raising the rates for the settlement and how they're going to benefit from the rate increase and the additional work that's going to be done in cleaning the sewers and reducing spills. The outreach results, we actually covered the whole city. We met everyone from San Pedro out to the west end of the valley, from the north valley, west LA, east LA. And we're open now for questions.
Before we begin with council member discussion, we do have several speakers here under public comment for this item. But before we get to public comment, let me ask Mr. Labange to proceed with his introductions.
Mr. President, members, thank you very much. We have two distinguished groups visiting and observing our government, first and foremost, from Shanghai, China, the young leaders and visiting scholars. Will you please stand and be recognized by the city council, a distinguished delegation from China? Thank you. Equally today, we have a very distinguished group from Taipei, English diplomat delegation. Please stand and be recognized by the city council. Shei Shei. Thank you, members, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Now, let's proceed to public comment for item number one. Council calls forward Marty Wall, followed by Addie Miller, Donald Dombrowski, Reggie Moon, and I'll call other individuals as we proceed with public comment. If I can ask you to please form a line behind the podium, that would also expedite things this morning. And finally, Madam Clerk, can you help me out with a 10-minute clock, please? Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Marty Wall, president of the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council. Our board is concerned about the fairness of the proposed rate increase, but did not adopt an official position because the Bureau of Sanitation could not produce the data we needed. So I'm speaking today as an individual. I believe that many Valley residents use substantially more water for irrigation than does the average city resident, water that does not enter the sewer system primarily due to our hotter, drier climate and larger lot sizes. Water not discharged into the sewer should not be the basis on which sewer repair costs are allocated. Unable to get a Valley-average sewer service charge from the Bureau, I compiled data for my own DWP bills. For my first six years in Chatsworth, my average bi-monthly sewer charge was over $92. That's about $46 a month, twice the city average. In 2002, I had a second water meter installed to permit measurement of the irrigation water. Since then, my average bill has been $24.10, about $12 a month. I was being overcharged nearly 300%, costing me about $2,400 over those first six years. I think it's safe to say that the city's current methodology is a very poor estimator of the sewer discharge amounts. My old sewer charges fluctuated wildly with rainfall. After the wettest winter, the bills were as low as $23, but after dry winters, they reached over $200. Besides further illustrating the unreasonableness of the city's methodology, this raises a question of why the city would want to fund a long-term project with such a variable revenue stream. A flat-per-meter charge equivalent to the average increase, while not as good as finding the money out of the current budget, would be fairer to Valley residents and provide a predictable revenue stream for the work to be done. Valley residents are already paying more than our fair share of water, sewer, and other city costs. Please take a more equitable and reasonable approach on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Addie M. Miller, and I'm here to speak against this for the simple reason it's going to impose a tax burden on our senior citizens, our low-income, and possibility run our small businesses away from Los Angeles. I attended a little meeting not too long ago, and a man said that he may have to move his business from the city of Los Angeles to somewhere else because his bill was going to go enormous. We have to be business-friendly here. We have to keep our costs down. And I encourage you, members of the city council, the city of Los Angeles, to kind of think about this before you vote on passing this issue, okay? Please. Because not only is it going to harm the senior citizens that paved the way for all of us to be here, including you, our grandparents, low-income, and we need our small businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Kevin Singer, Local Government Affairs Director, the Apartment Association. If I may take Mr. Don's place, I think I can wrap up a lot of the public comments so we can move out here a little quicker, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Honorable council members, my name is Kevin Singer. I'm the Local Government Affairs Director for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Of our 27,000 members at the Apartment Association, I am proud to tell you today and proud to boast today that 49% of our members are minorities, 22% are union members, and 42% are senior citizens. Of the 560,000 rent-controlled apartment units that you have in the city of Los Angeles, over 50% are owned by these small mom and pops who stand behind me right now. Over the last four years, they've seen 50% increase in gas bills, 27% increase in liability insurance, 30% increase in workers' comp, 10% maintenance costs, 17% property taxes, 3% sewer fees, 1.5% trash fees, 11% DWP fees, and today, a 30% increase in the sewer fees. And I hear more DWP fees increases are on the way as well. And yet, their 3% annual increase has not gone up in 12 years. You may ask, why hasn't it gone up in 12 years? Because it's tied to the Consumer Price Index, which does not take into consideration any of these costs that I just mentioned above. In a transmittal from the Housing Department to the mayor's office dated August 12, 2004, it says, "Since 1994," and I have this in front of each one of you, "the landlord's ability to defer critical maintenance has been curtailed by the city's implementation of the systematic code enforcement program. Given these changes, it may be appropriate..." Given these changes, it may be appropriate for the city to reexamine the cost of operating rental housing and the means by which landlords can recover increases in those costs." That's from the Housing Department to the mayor's office. "We are very sensitive to the city's need to settle this lawsuit and continue to improve our infrastructure in the city of Los Angeles. But now we ask you, as city council members, to be sensitive to us staying in business and continuing to provide affordable housing. If these people behind me go out of business, there will be very little affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles. In order to stop this continued loss of affordable housing, we ask you, as city council people, to, number one, create a pass-through for the increases in sewer fees and any other government increases. And, second, we need to authorize a study to see if the Consumer Price Index is a good index to use to preserve and maintain our affordable housing." These members who are standing with me today are not even aware, but I was just handed a motion by Councilman Parks' office that they have instructed the city attorney's office and the city housing department to do a study about passing on these increases in fees. I ask all of you, as the rest of the city council members, when this comes before your committee, please support these people. I mean, these are your good, small-business owners, and they deserve to stay in business in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other cards I have submitted under the Apartment Association include Paul Gray, Marvin Garcia, Donald Dombrowski, Reggie Moon. Thank you all for being here. I'm not sure if Yuko Ayama Gabe is also part of the association or Audrey Quarles. Come forward if you are not. And let me also call forward Richard Otterstrom. Sir?
My name is Paul Gray. I own a nine-unit apartment building in the city of Los Angeles. I'm one of those owners who have pride of ownership and keep my building up. My main concern is not whether I support this or not. I just don't support it in this current format for just very practical reasons. When you are only allowed to increase your rents 3%, and that's a restriction put on me by a city agency specifically the Rent Stabilization Board, and when you then have increases that are opposed by another agency of the city, in this case, the proposed increase in the sewer service charge of 7%, it just doesn't take a MBA from Harvard to realize that there's a disconnect. And then, when you consider that of my three largest expenses for this building, which is sewer service charge, together with waters, number three, property insurance is number two, and property taxes are number one, my property insurance has been going up 18% over the last four years. My property taxes have also been going up at a rate more than 3%, and that's primarily because of voter indebtedness and direct assessments, and many of those direct assessments come from agencies within the city. I calculate that approximately somewhere in the middle of this century, I will simply not have the income to be able to pay all of my expenses and pass on the building that to my grandchildren because there simply is not going to be any economic value in that building. I realize that this is an increase proposed for only five years, but if you read carefully in the notice, there appears to be a very high likelihood that there's going to be a subsequent five years as well, years 6 through 10, where there's also going to be increases, I presume, also at approximately a rate of 7% a year. So my request is not that you don't increase the sewer service tax charge, but that you increase at a rate commensurate with what I am able to actually afford at this point. That's 3%. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Do you have my card up there, Alex?
Your name?
William Morrison. I know you missed me on public comments.
I still have Richard Otterstrom, Sylvan Hawkins, and William Morrison.
Okay, so I'm the last speaker.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, well, actually, I'm against this water increase rate with the DWP. Of course, in 1998, they were saying about the Al Niño. Now, we're being charged for healing the bay, and we're going to have to be paying for the lawsuit of the city. The DWP should be responsible to replace these sewer systems, like infrastructure. Also, subcontracting out people to check and monitor the sewers is wrong if we have city employees to do that, DWP employees. And I really feel strongly against this increase. Remember, you, the council in front of me, are voting in from the people behind me. You work for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
My name is Audrey Quarles, and I am against the increase. On my last bill, I have $63.81 worth of taxes. And on the bill before that, I have $53 and something worth of taxes besides the bill. So please do not add any other tax to my bill and try to take some of these off. Thank you.
Mr. President, council members, I'm Richard Otterstrom. I'm the public policy chairman for the Greater Los Angeles Association of Realtors. I have two issues relating to this proposed motion. The first one relating to the Department of Water and Power bill and the recent raises and the continuing controversy that still surrounds that, and now we're looking at another large increase. We at the Board of Realtors want to make sure that all fees that are proposed are necessary and targeted only to the areas where they're proposed to be used and not any of them to be a portion, any portion of that to be used as a general tax in disguise. Secondly, with what was said about the rent-controlled apartments, so many costs, workers' compensation, insurance, right on down to utilities, which are going far above the cost of living for the region or for the 3% that's allowable the last decade or so. With other regulations, it's becoming more and more difficult for the small apartment owners to maintain their business, and we're seeing more of the older buildings disappearing. And when we do see new buildings being built in place of them, those are mainly targeted for homeownership. Now, that's not altogether a bad thing, and Realtors certainly support homeownership, but we need to keep the old buildings healthy so we do have lower-cost housing in this city. So please consider the pass-throughs for an ability to share these extraordinary costs that go above cost of living and to give incentive to the tenants to conserve water in this case. And I ask you also, where are the water rate pass-through study and the 3% general raise in apartment rents? Those studies were supposed to be coming through the Housing Department. We haven't seen them. We'd like to know where they're at. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lenny Hawkins. I am with the surcharge fee increase. I believe that it's very needed. I think that we should not put all the price on the Department of Water and Power, but I think as a community of people, we should work together. I do not believe that $1.75 a year out of our pocket will hurt us. I think that we all should share this cost together. Our city drains must be clean because of any case of mudslides, rainstorms, or waste bins, which must need it to be cleaned. Also concerning our ocean for fresher food and a fresher environment of things that comes out of the ocean. I am very much concerned of us sharing the cost of the equipment that we're about to receive with this passing. So I'm with this surcharge fee and cost, and drains must be cleared at all times in California because of mudslides and because of, we don't get too much rain, but it is very needed for waste bins. Again, thank you.
This concludes public comment for item number one. Now turn to council members' discussion, beginning with Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things I think that we've been asked in the community, a variety of questions, and I'd just like to see if you could walk us through it. It may have been part of the presentation, but it may help clarify for those who can't be here today just where we are on the sewer issue. One, the question that comes up significantly is that people believe that they funded or voted for a bond, or bonds were floated, and they're being paid for, and they thought the sewer was fixed. And it goes back to the Hyperion, and then I may have the wrong acronym, but EFS. And then, all of a sudden, we're saying sewer charge. Could you give us an explanation what that process was? What did we fix? What remains to be fixed and how we've gotten to where we are today?
Well, I'll make an attempt, and the staff can pitch in because they're right behind me as well. I think there are three different points. First of all, the Hyperion treatment plants were floated by many bonds that created, that improved the Hyperion treatment plant to get us the secondary and tertiary treatment and improve those plants. But that project is done. The Hyperion treatment plant project is finished. Then we had a second round of improvements to our infrastructure sewers, and that was the ESIS project, the East Interceptor Sewer Line, and what we call NICE, the North-Central Interceptor Sewer Line, and then the Eagle Rock Project. The ESIS project was recently completed this spring, and that project is finished on time, within budget, and now we are completing the other two arms of that. That's the northern end and the Eagle Rock piece. And so those bonds were floated for that, and those projects are underway. And in May, those projects will begin completion and testing. And by November, the other two arms of the entire sewer line, that entire sewer line, ESIS, NICE, and Eagle Rock will be completed this year.
Okay, and that came out of the same pot of bond money?
That was a separate bond.
I mean, but it was...
It's still sewer.
They were floating bonds as they went forward?
Correct, correct. And then now we get to the Baykeeper settlement.
Okay, but let me go back one step. How did the public pay for those bonds? How was that paid? Was that part of the sewer fees also?
Right.
Okay, sewer service fee paid for those bonds. Now, let's go to the Baykeeper.
And then the third piece of the, we know that during this time, we've had some rate increases over those years, and the sewer service charge to pay for those projects. Because if you remember, we've had a, we've not done a lot of work on our sewer system in over 100 years. So this is a, we embarked upon a major improvement to try to bring ourselves up to some kind of level of usage. Now we're at the third step, which is the Baykeeper lawsuit, which we were already in progress of doing, but in this case, it was accelerating what already has been in progress of the city in an improvement with our projects of keeping our sewer lines clean and constantly surveying and improving even the smaller pieces of our sewer lines. And that's what this project is for.
And Baykeeper will be funded by floating additional bonds and be paid for by sewer fees?
Right. And I wouldn't, and I guess, just to be real clear, it's not so much Baykeepers will be...
I know, but the requirements of what we settled for.
Yeah, the settlement itself with regard, and it was a great step forward for us, the environmentalists, in the community to get to this point. So yes, it will necessitate an increase in fees in order for us, and in floating bonds in order to pay for this. Correct.
And so this group of bonds now is somewhere around, what, $3 billion or so?
Lisa Maury, Bureau of Sanitation. We did receive voter authorization to issue up to $3.5 billion worth of bonds. This occurred in the late '80s and the early '90s. Up till this point, we've issued approximately $2.5 billion, so we have almost $1 billion left under that original authorization. And we will be using that in order to issue bonds for the upcoming projects.
Okay. And then could you explain or separate the difference between Baykeepers and the bonds and Prop O and what Prop O is intended to do?
Okay. Now, remember, we're talking about wastewater collection and then stormwater.
Because a number of people have merged them together.
Yeah, and it's easy to do. And of course, the staff can chip in on this too, because I get them confused myself sometimes.
Because people believe they voted for something that they just kind of assume is sewer and it's all one thing.
Yes, stormwater runoff is watershed protection is what we call it. But where we have stormwater runoff, that's not treated through the sewers or anything else. So we're looking at a way in order to protect our oceans and rivers that we have protection there. And there's been legislation by the Regional Water Quality Board, as well as the state, to say that we need to keep our, treat our stormwater so that that is also a part of keeping our Clean Water Act intact. And that's a part that many of us in many municipalities had not really worked on until now. So Prop O was an initiative to get the start on, if you've heard of, TMDLs or regulations that require us now to deal with...
Explain that for the public, the TMDLs.
The total daily maximum load of how much trash and debris and bacteria can infect our stormwater runoff so that we don't have bacteria in the ocean and other problems. So Prop O addresses those issues.
Okay. And so the issue, and you connected it, is that our storm drains connect to the sewer, to the ocean.
To the ocean, correct.
And that's what we're trying to clean up with Prop O?
That's correct. And they had not previously been addressed.
Okay. All right, because that's the kind of clarity, I think, is missing in the discussion. The other thing is that we've received some charts to show our comparison with other cities.
Correct.
And it appears that some cities like Seattle fluctuates over time. Chicago was at least listed number one and then dropped to 25 or so. What has happened in those cities to either make their sewer fees rise significantly or drop significantly? Do we know?
In a lot of cases, what happens is that these cities are facing the same changing regulatory climate that we are. For cities whose fees are going up, they may have new discharge permits for their treatment plants, and they may need to be doing projects, and that will cause increases. Sometimes when we see decreases on these surveys, a lot of times that's due more to different methodologies of surveying. What we found occasionally is that sometimes I know in a lot of surveys, for instance, the numbers for Chicago are only the numbers for the treatment side of their operation because they have two different entities. One does collection and one does treatment. And sometimes what we find on these surveys is that the numbers that are in there, particularly if they're very low, may only reflect the treatment or the collection side rather than our numbers, which are inclusive of both operations.
Do we have an estimate that if we did not follow the Baykeeper settlement, what it may be costing the city in litigation or continued litigation? Do we have any idea or cost or figure that we can give the public? Or approximate?
I'm not sure that we looked at it from that perspective. I mean, maybe if someone on the staff, maybe they researched it further, but...
Well, what was requested by the litigants were $550 million in penalties and $6 billion in work.
Okay. So the issue would be continuous litigation that we'd be defending ourselves, plus there were costs that they were asking for us to pay for these spills?
And a lot of open-ended costs. If you did so many spills, you'd have to do even more cleaning or more replacement. There was a lot of open-ended commitments. The settlement took all those commitments off the table.
Okay. And those commitments, if we had to go forward, would end up being paid for by the sewer fees?
Exactly.
So our expectation is by doing or settling, we're fixing the problem at a less cost than if we were in continuous litigation?
Correct. And you're ending up in the same spot at the end. You've got a good, healthy system.
Okay.
And that's what everyone wanted, as well as the fact out of this, instead of paying all fines, we ended up with supplemental environmental projects that allowed us to do other things with that money other than just pay fines for them as well.
And that system that we're building, the expectation is it's going to last for decades? Is that...
It's our expectation.
Expectation, okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one quick question? The other question we asked, with the lifeline for water and power, do seniors have an ability or a process to seek a reduction in these costs?
Under the Clean Water Act, we're not allowed to give a discount simply on the basis of being senior, but we do have a low-income discount. And so if any of the senior customers qualify for that, they do receive a discounted sewer service charge.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raice?
Thank Council President. First, I want to thank the department for their hard work. It's been a long haul for the past two years getting to this point. Just a couple of things. One is I do support this gradual increase, and I do feel it's strong. We need to strongly send a message that how we move about in this direction is going to be very important. For example, both Rita Robinson and Gary Moore have done a tremendous job in working with the Lincoln Heights facility, in which there we're looking at, not only do we address this need for treating the odors, but we're looking at how we look at these one-time structural changes. The... changes that change the face of the community in such a way where they become just, more than just one type of use. Here we're looking at the potential of open space, parking, complementing the commercial area, but the primary focus here is treating the odors. So we're going beyond just thinking of a pipeline and how we just engineer something to perform one function. Here we're thinking very creatively as to how we create multiple benefits so that the community, the constituents, people living in apartments, people living in homes can benefit from an improvement that's just beyond a pipeline or, or a industrial-type approach to these kinds of problems. So I'm hoping we continue in that direction, and we continue to be pushing the envelope and working with the local folks so that we can stimulate the kind of environments that we do increase, the values for not only the property owners, but the residents, the quality of life, and change the environment, particularly because many of these older sewer lines are in the older parts of the city. In northeast LA, we've had the raw sewage actually surfacing in the streets. We actually had children being sick of bacteria that was caused by these antiquated systems. So this is a very real life and death issue, and I'm just, I'm so dramatic, but people are getting sick because we were not performing, we were not doing the kinds of improvements that are dearly needed. So, and this one last piece, or maybe I'll just push my button again, but I want to talk about the education. How do we inform people? When I look at the form that was sent out, when people get this amongst the tons of stuff they get in their mail, they're not going to read this, they're going to just set this aside. So we have to be much more creative in how we send the message, maybe using charts or strong, bold lettering that talks about, you know, the point of this message so they don't throw it away. When you look at multilingual pieces of mail, again, we should be more creative in how we get this message out, because right now, it's just like a giant contract that no one wants to read, and it just gets pushed away. So there are many legal issues here that we need to continue working on in terms of how we address the issue of accountability, but more importantly, how do we get people informed and educated as to the purpose of this increase? And the notion of Prop O and how it affects the river and the ocean and our environment is a very real issue, and it's about time that we just buckle down and do, we need to do, because I know it's not a very popular thing to be doing at this time. So thank you, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at the information renewing our sewer infrastructure, the infrastructure's 100 and how many years old?
Some pipes are over 100 years old.
Some pipes over 100 years old. I know that we have water breakage pipes where we'll see a main break and the street shut down. Oftentimes, what Public Works does with this particular aspect, people don't see it. What I'll see oftentimes is those big trucks that you have, the big vacuum trucks that go out wee hours of the morning, they take off the man cover, and they put something in there and they flush it out. And I've spoken to those folks before, and it's a task that people don't even know takes place. But it doesn't run on an automatic system, it runs on a system that is antiquated, built over 100 years ago. Clearly, the population's increased. Clearly, we have more demand on the system. Now, a couple of questions I have. Other cities that surround the city of Los Angeles, Beverly Hills, Glendale, Pasadena, Culver City, do they use our facilities, do their sewers feed into our system into the plant? And I've been to the plant near the ocean, the judge, Pregrson. Hyperion, Hyperion. I've seen that operation, and it's a phenomenal operation that you have there. In fact, I see some gentlemen in the audience that push those buttons in those computers. It's amazed at how that operation works. Are other cities build at the same rate we're building our residents in the city of Los Angeles for the lawsuit? And I understand the lawsuit went on for six years. It was a court decision that we agreed upon, so if we go back on our agreement, then we're violating the quarter, so I don't think we have any opportunity other than to proceed with this. But a concern I have, our residents are going to have an increase. The more water that they use, the higher the rate's going to be. Because if you use 10 gallons, you're going to have a sewer sanitation charge. If you use 50 gallons, you're going to be billed on the number of gallons that come in your house, unless you get one of those separate meters for your yard, et cetera. Are neighboring cities being built the same? Have we increased those rates for the neighboring cities?
Dan, we have 27 contract agencies that have a contract that says that they have to pay that year's rate. And for them, it's our, how much it costs to convey their sewage to our plants as well as treat it. So if our costs go up, they pay their fair share. And they also pay it into the lawsuit, their share of the lawsuit.
Were they a part of the lawsuit? Or was it on our shoulders?
No, it's on our shoulders.
Okay. And I know that it's not realistic to have these neighboring cities set up a sanitation operation like we have, it just isn't practical. The other question regarding the apartment owners that are here, and I've met with them before and heard their concerns. 14 years ago, it was established at a 3% rate. People who live in apartments that want to wash their cars, that run the laundry, et cetera, they're not billed. The owner of the property gets a water and power bill, they then pay that bill. Has that been considered to have some assistance? When we discuss this within the Public Works, to have some assistance for the owners of those properties, they're going to suffer additional costs to run those buildings. And more apartments that convert to condos, the more people displaced because of the price of the condos, which is another phase we're going through now with condo conversion from apartments.
Actually, we don't have any involvement in how the property owners pass along the cost for the sewer to their tenants.
Well, ask what is ever, was it ever discussed?
Right. So we, we didn't discuss that. We are required to charge the multifamily units based on their proportional usage of the system. So that's, that's what sanitation's requirement is to do. We're not involved as the housing authority is, the Rent Stabilization Board, on the requirements for how the landlords can pass that along to their tenants.
And if I can just for a second, just put on my old housing hat. I dreaded to put it on, but I'll put it on again. And I'm not trying to speak for Mercedes in this case at all. But having had discussions in my housing days with Kevin and the groups that are represented here, and have a good working relation, the city has a great working relationship with those organizations, the Bureau has met with the Housing Department on other issues of, regarding pass-through, and we'd be more than happy to be a part of whatever research is done regarding how the pass-through works and any support we can lend them with regard to how they craft that language, we would certainly be right at the table with them. And it is very important that we keep that partnership wide open.
I think that's appropriate. When you look at, when you look at, the last time it was done was 14 years ago, and we know the price of everything has gone up dramatically in the past 14 years. Just two more points. I want to thank the Agla folks for being here, and I know that you folks have other things to do. Thank you for being here. And the other response I have is for the gentleman that mentioned Department of Water and Power. Water and Power delivers the power, delivers the water. So it comes in from the Water and Power Department, and then Public Works, which is what you folks represent, deals with the after-effects. And there's no connection between the two, other than they're both operated by the city of Los Angeles. I just want to make that point of clarification. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. First of all, I think Mr. Parks did an excellent job of exploring the issue and getting a lot of those questions resolved, some of which I was going to address. I thank you for that very excellent exploration. First of all, there was one comment a lady made about seniors, I think that was well addressed, that, that we do allow a discount for seniors that are of low income. And as far as businesses go, I think it's important to point out, on the water and power issue, which is not the sewer's sewer service charge, on the water and power issue, that Los Angeles has some of the lowest water rates and power rates in the United States, and particularly on the West Coast. And so if anyone's leaving town because of those rates, they're going to find they're going to be in bigger trouble someplace else. But as far as the sewer service charge goes, a gentleman from my district brought up something I would like to ask, and that's Mr. Wall from Chatsworth. I remember many years ago when this was brought up a couple of times, I think it was mid-'90s, probably before most of this council was here. The issue of the San Fernando Valley was discussed greatly for two reasons. One, because there are larger property lots in the San Fernando Valley with much more landscaping, which does not go back to the sewer. And secondly, the excessive heat that we have in the valley, which is sometimes 10 to 15 degrees hotter in the San Fernando Valley, evaporates a lot of the water that people use for landscaping purposes. And so for that, would you please address what the council did back in the '90s to offset some of those impacts as far as the rates and how the discounts are set up?
Absolutely. Since 1997, we've used the winter water use method to calculate the sewer bills for our residential customers. The intent of winter water use is to take irrigation water out of the equation because we don't want to charge people a sewer service charge for water that never enters our system. So the methodology is based on the water usage during the winter. We start with the person's lowest water usage. So that immediately takes out all the water that people use during the summer. We realize Southern California, people still need to irrigate during the winter, so we have an additional dry winter compensation factor that we're able to adjust depending on how dry or what the winter was. This is generally somewhere between an additional 10 and 20% discount. So that's the methodology that was approved by council that, that attempts to take the irrigation out of the factor. It's something not many wastewater agencies do. Most wastewater agencies charge 100% of water consumption, so this was a little bit unusual of trying to address the, the issues at Los Angeles. However, developing a system for the 550,000 accounts that are billed under residential, we realize it doesn't fit everybody perfectly. So we also have a private water sub-meter program for customers that aren't able to reduce their irrigation during the winter, who have unique circumstances. They can have a separate water meter installed. It's purchased from DWP. DWP reads it when they do their regular meter reads. And it can measure either the water that's used outside or inside. And when they're billed, they only get billed on, on what's used inside the home. And that's worked out really well for a lot of our customers.
I also would add that when we take the lowest usage, that's used for the year around. It's July 1, that's what, what is, the customers are being charged. So if they have a swimming pool and there's evaporation, and they're using more water, they're not being, they're not being charged more sewer, they're being, it's based on that winter water use. So it's a level pay plan through the whole year.
You created a baseline that really gave somewhat of an advantage, not advantage, but somewhat of a recognition of the factor that the valley has those problems.
So it's a, it's a, it's a level pay plan through the, from July 1 through June 30, I think.
I think that's an important distinction that a lot of people don't understand, even a lot of members of this council weren't here when that discussion took place, but there were real serious attempts to offset and mitigate the problems the valley faces that's unique to the rest of the city. So thank you for explaining that. And also, I have talked to a number of people that have installed that meter, and I, I think the average tell me they're about $600 a person, and they tell me that usually it's paid for within one or two years, that they're on the plus side of the equation very quickly. So anyone watching Channel 35 needs to know that they can contact Water and Power and see by getting that meter installed, or sanitation, sorry, and get that installed. And if you have a large lot, you have a lot of either pool or a large landscaping area that that can be very quickly mitigated and profitable for you in the long run. I think it's important. Secondly, Mr. Wall also brought a question which I'd like to explore on the legalities, and that is, have you considered a flat rate rather than, you know, a flat per meter per location rate rather than a graduated scale based on how much water you use, which would then say we are also looking at the problems of the valley and trying to spread it equally across all specters of society?
The difficulty with the flat rate is that then we end up with people who perhaps only have one or two people in a home who have very low water usage paying the same as a home that may have six people living in it. In the latest American Water Works Association survey, 77% of wastewater utilities that responded base their charges on water consumption. Generally, flat charges are more typically used if you have a situation where the wastewater utility does not have access to the water records. For instance, if you have a sanitation district that may cover the territory of several water providers. In our situation, because we do have access to DWP water records, that really supports trying to acknowledge that we have some people who maybe only use one or two HCF, and we want to make sure they're not paying the same as somebody who sends a lot more wastewater to the sewer.
Thank you. All right, my time's almost run out, so I just want to say I was very pleased to second Mr. Parks' motion on the pass-through for the apartment owners. I think it's time that this council understand that this is a group of citizens who are providing one of our most important assets, and that's housing for every level of society, from the poorest to the richest, and it's time to recognize that they shouldn't bear the burden of these rate increases on their back, that the users are the ones that really need to pay the price. And it's time for this council to recognize that and adjust the, the pass-throughs accordingly. So I'm very pleased to support that.
I have Mr. Carruthon next on the queue, followed by Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Garcetti, and then Mr. Parks for a second time. Mr. Carruthon.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, or should I say professor? People dialing into Channel 35 need to understand that once in a while, you might learn something. Because the fact of the matter is, I represent the San Fernando Valley, and I'm glad to see that we're explaining that we have, in fact, tried to change the way we do business. And I'm glad you pointed out that a lot of the municipal districts do not, do not have those kinds of factors, and they don't take those things into account, and they haven't done much about the fact that some people might have a bigger yard than others, and they might be paying a little bit too much. In all fairness, those adjustments have been made. Maybe not perfect, but we've actually made some real-time adjustments that save our citizens some money, and that it's a much more fair system. Getting back to the actual charge itself, what's the percentage change that we're talking about today?
7%.
A 7% change. And what's the basic dollar amount that we're estimating it might cause, cost your average user?
The typical user would increase about $1.75 a month.
An additional $1.75 a month. Now, one of the things that I think people complain about is the fact that they say, well, why do you, you're already charging me sewer charge, why are you charging more? My question is this, how do we compare to other jurisdictions like the county that has sewer charges and other cities around us in Southern California? How do we compare? Are we like way expensive? Are we in the middle? Are we toward the bottom? Where are we at?
Currently, we're in the middle. And once we update our, our figures for the new survey, it'll be interesting to see how our new ones come out, but based on the 2002 survey, we'll move up to the top third.
Top third as far as price?
50 largest communities.
Okay, so we're not the most expensive. We're not in the middle, we're above the middle.
Right.
When it comes to expense. Now, secondly, who else is contemplating changing their sewer charges in Southern California?
We've, LA County Sanitation District just raised theirs, Orange County Sanitation District, Burbank and Glendale just raised theirs last year. So, you know, of course, they blame us, the ones that, that, that come to us, but they also have raised their rates.
Okay, so the bottom line is, this isn't, with all due respect, this isn't an agreed factor, this is the factor that we have to use to do business.
Correct.
Has it, has it gotten more expensive to do business of treating sewage and things of that nature over the, say, the last 10 years or so?
Absolutely. In addition to just the cost of living increases that we have to pay for materials and chemicals, et cetera, we've been under increasingly stricter regulations over the past 10 years. And so we've had to put in new treatment plant processes, we've had to change the way we do things. And what we're looking at with this increase is really increasing the level of service that we're providing to the city of Los Angeles, doing increased sewer cleaning, rehabbing sewers at a faster rate. So we're really looking at, at a significant increase in the level of service that we're going to provide.
So you, you actually said increasing the level of service. I think that's important for Angelenos to understand. If, for example, we have a spill or a leak, and we get sued and we lose, do we pay some kind of fine, or do we pay some kind of damages? And where do those damages go? Do they go back to Angelenos? Do they go to the feds? Do they go to the state? Or they just kind of disappear from our jurisdiction and go somewhere else? What happens?
All above.
All of the above?
Yeah.
So bottom line is, when we get sued, they don't sue the city of Los Angeles and say, here, Angelenos, here's your money back. They don't. They basically, what they do when they sue us, they say, here, Angelino, we want to take more money from you because we had a spill, or we weren't able to treat the water properly, or we did violate some kind of law, right?
Absolutely. Every time we have a spill and we have to pay a penalty, that doesn't benefit our system, whereas the settlement agreement that we're, that we're going forward with allowed us to sink almost all the money back into our system so we could actually see improvements.
So basically, we're, we've been able to put our, what we're trying to do is put So basically, we've been able to put our, what we're trying to do is put ourselves in a situation where we want to be responsible, we want to treat this sewage. And the fact of the matter is, this sewage is a responsibility of all Angelenos, it's just that your department is responsible for treating it and dealing with it. And the bottom line is, it's not your money, it's the Angelino's money, right?
Correct.
And so in addition to that, when we do get sued, it happens, it's happening right now, it's happened before, and it'll happen into the future, hopefully less if we do a better job and we get more resources and use it properly. But when we pay those fines, do we end up having to fix it anyway?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. We pay twice.
What I'm saying is, they say, "Bad Los Angeles, you did something wrong, you hurt the environment, or you had a spill, or a kid got sick," or what have you. And then if we lose a lawsuit, we end up paying some money out there, and it doesn't stay here, it goes away somewhere. And then on top of that, invariably, that judge, or whoever it is, that made some kind of judgment on the city, and they say, "Now that you've paid the fines, now you need to fix it. You need to tell us how you're going to fix it, we don't care how much it costs." Well, basically, they pretty much don't care how much it costs. They say, "Your problem, now fix it."
Correct.
So the bottom line is, the Angelenos are always going to pay no matter what?
Many of our sewer projects that we're just finishing up were part of those consent orders.
Now, my two final points is this: Do you know of any other jurisdiction in Southern California that are reducing their rates?
No.
No.
Not in Southern California, because we're all under many of the same regulations that are impacting us.
Yeah, I would imagine that most jurisdictions throughout the country are not reducing the rates, but I don't want to get too complicated, I want to be fair about saying, at least people who have to deal with what we have to deal with. Thank you for pointing that out. Secondly...
Mr. Carrionus.
My last point is this: Secondly, and my last point, what can we do to make sure that we don't have to charge too much more, more than we're charging right now? How did we come about calculating this 7 percent increase, or this average of $1.75 per household?
That's based on the increased amount of operations expenditures that we expect with the additional cleaning and videotaping of the sewers, as well as projections for what our construction costs are going to be for the various projects that are specified in the settlement agreement. And so the rate increases were calculated based on our assumptions for that. One reason why we're only going forward with five years' worth of increases rather than the full 10 years is because there's still a lot of uncertainty about what's going to be happening in the last five years, as far as what construction costs are going to do. The last couple of years, we've seen tremendous increases in construction costs. We certainly hope that doesn't continue, or the last five years of the settlement agreement may be a lot more than we anticipated. But the rates were calculated based on what we thought we were going to need to get through the first five years. We will look at those every year to make sure that's actually the amount we need. If, for some reason, we're not spending as much as we projected, and we don't need that full increase, we won't institute it, we'll institute a lower one. So that's how we're going to make sure that the increases are in line with what our actual needs are.
And your department is not exempt. In other words, you are, in fact, subject to all the controller's requirements and all the kinds of things, the checks and balances, to check on you to make sure that you're using the money properly and efficiently.
Plus, we're audited every year by an outside audit team.
You're audited every year?
Every year.
Automatically?
Automatically.
And you could have other audits in between, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, first, I want to begin by really applauding the department. I remember those heavy rains, and I remember a council member in the 8th District at that time, Ridley Thomas, who had spent a number of hours out there in the streets with me. I was working at the L.A. Conservation Corps at the time, and a number of our crews were out there supporting city crews in terms of trying to do some of the cleanup. And what was interesting is, as the city moved forward to begin looking at the NOS/ESIS sewer line project, and began looking at rebuilding aging sewer systems that had been built in the 1920s, what's kind of amazing is if the people who are monitoring this process were to picture automobiles that were built in the 1920s, I mean, picture that right now versus what we have today. Well, in the world of environmental work and pipeline construction, picture a 1920 sewer system versus a 2004 sewer system. I mean, it's a whole different world now, and I cannot begin to tell you how important in terms of what I believe was the real environmental racism that took place prior to the city really taking this aggressive approach to rebuild the aging sewer infrastructure. I thought that was far more egregious, the lack of that earlier work, than what we're proposing and dealing with today. I also want to say that we've talked a lot here about localized disasters. For the residents who, in the middle of the night, have to call in because there has been some type of a sewer line break, those who are listening now know exactly what we're referring to. This city has an aging infrastructure. The environmentalists captured it, they recognized it, they did their due diligence, they did what they should have done, which was force us to respond. And I think the response that the city has taken has been nothing short of heroic. And so for all the city workers and people that have been involved in the process, I really applaud them. Greg Smith and others who have spoken on this, obviously, also have recognized the inherent need to do this rate increase, to deal with the required infrastructure improvements. And I don't think there's any way to get around that. I mean, if you just look at the books, there's really no way to get around that. One level of applause, and I know that some of the people that were here earlier, that hasn't really been articulated, is what the rate increase would have been had the city not prevailed in court. I know a couple of you have attempted to make that case, but I think we need to keep reminding the public that this council authorized the city attorney to go forward, fight this case vigilantly. The city attorney did a heroic job and settled this case in a manner that actually saved ratepayers almost twice the rates that they would have been charged to cover that increase had we lost in court. And so again, another team of city employees, another team of city policymakers, I think we're on the right path and have actually saved ratepayers money. I want to, I'm going to support this today, but I want to also call attention to Bernard Parks', what you've asked for. I know there's this theory, this feeling, that this city council is so far bent to the left that there's no sense in bringing in anything in it here that talks about rent control, talks about wages. But I want to disagree. I think this council is more interested in fairness than anything. And I'm actually pleased, I know both Greg and Bernard are about to drop their jaw here, but I'm actually pleased that you've brought this in. And I, for one, am going to be an individual that is looking forward to the discussion in Eric Garcetti's committee. And I know that he took a shot at this one time before. I do think we need to take a look at the issue of fairness, because I think there are a number of issues here that need to be explored. I want to make sure that, just as we've looked at a threshold for small business tax relief, there may be some threshold that's required here with rate relief, if we can call it rate relief. There's also issues that have been very well articulated by staff here in terms of size of households. If you look at the Ludlow household, we're growing, and we're a bigger household, proudly a bigger household. In fact, I've got photos here of the increases of the household. That's new baby Ludlow. So I think we got to take a look at this. And I'm a newer member of the council, probably part of that group that's been deemed part of the council left. But I want to say to the apartment owners, you're going to get a day here to come back in, let's talk about this. I challenged city staff to really dig deep, and I applaud Councilmember Parks and Smith to raising this once again. I know Councilmember Garcetti, as the chair of the committee, is interested in this discussion, and I definitely am as well, because I do think we need to take a harder look at the pass-through, how it comes, where it comes, and what structure it looks like. But again, applaud your efforts. I think we got to do what we got to do today, but I'm looking forward to the next discussion on this. So looking forward to that debate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was reading the L.A. Times last year from mid-1800s, and it talked about our sewer system back then, which was essentially just to the east of here, and it was an open sewer downtown, and everybody would kind of throw their waste, their waste would be channeled there, and it would flow down to folks who lived by Long Beach. And I was reading editorial that said, "Down Long Beach, they're complaining that they live downstream." And the realization, in Los Angeles, the L.A. Times wrote at that moment, that we're all downstream from somebody. And since that point, we have steadily tried to improve a sewer system here, and it's probably the most costly public works undertaking we have as a city. It is, bar none. In fact, our recent upgrades, I think, are among the largest public works projects in the country underway right now. And we also face, I appreciate Mr. Parks' kind of laying out those three different streams between sewers, storm drains, and water supply. The three do interact with one another, even though they're distinct streams. We do have, as we've talked about, sewer spills, which spill into the storm drains, which is why we have those unhealthy situations in neighborhoods and at the beach. And again, thanks to the voters for Proposition O, we're able to deal with that in combination with this. At the same time, hopefully, we look at water supply issues and think about this more comprehensively. And we have these federal requirements that have rolled out. When President Nixon approved the Clean Water Act, we had $8 billion from the federal government to deal with clean water. Today, we have $1 billion from the federal government. And this country's not gotten smaller, and our pollution has not been reduced dramatically. So that burden is increasingly put on all of us as Angelenos. So I appreciate apartment owners, the public, the neighborhood councils, and this council for recognizing that we all realize this is something we have to do, it's about how we go about doing it. On the housing front, I know this came up, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Ludlow, but I guess I was out-liberalized on my own committee last time we brought it up. But we will look at the overall, I think, pass-throughs. That's the way we need to do it. And I think it's a very simple thing to do for apartment owners, and I appreciate when they're saying, "Workers' comp has gone up this much, insurance has gone up this much." Those are percentages of overall costs. So for us to actually get an overall number, we need to look at that, figure out what have the last five, 10 years, overall cost to an average rent stabilized apartment owner's cost been. Then we took sometimes more than a 3 percent increase each year, and let's compound that and just compare the two, and see where we're at to make sure that we are fair to our small business owners. We owe the tenants that, we owe the apartment owners that as well, and we will have that undertaken in my committee and working together with the Housing Department. And lastly, I just want to say, one of the best ways we can reduce these costs long-term is water conservation. And in looking at overall costs into the future, the type of planting that we had, I appreciate what Mr. Smith said about the valley, and, you know, some people not in the valley talk about valley subsidy, and, you know, people in Bel Air say we have big lots too. And everybody kind of says, "Who's being treated fairly?" I think the most important thing we can do as a city is make sure that we aren't taking plants that shouldn't probably be growing in Los Angeles, and really planting those in areas where we have a decreasing water supply. So as we look at everything from landscape ordinance to the way that we, as businesses, small business owners, can work with you, whether you're apartment owners or others, to reduce that water use, that will be an important thing for the future. And I'll end on this: Department of Sanitation does that all the time, and we talk about the cost of doing business. In L.A., our demonstration project, for instance, on food waste, if you go to those restaurants that are doing that, we're recycling the food waste, and they're saving 50 to 60 percent on their hauling fees for food waste. We can help make Los Angeles a more business-friendly place in conjunction by changing our behavior, whether we're homeowners, whether we're renters, or whether we are business people as well. So I know this department is committed to that, I know that this council is, and together, all three of those streams will bring us back that healthy water that we all need and deserve.
Thank you. Mr. Lavange.
Thank you very much. Members, I just have a couple of questions. Does this fee go to pay for the 47 acres we own in Kern County to deal with sludge?
This, this...
The 47 hundred acres?
This fee can be used for the cost of our biosolids management, which, right now, we are hauling our biosolids out to Kern County, so this can contribute to the hauling cost and the maintenance cost for the farm.
Right. And then also, the issue of the 27 cities?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like a friendly amendment, that at some time in the future, that all those cities have to notify their residents that Los Angeles is treating their sewer water. I don't know if they know that. I don't, I want to know if they know that, but I think it would be helpful just to share that. And I also remember, you said they're all equal. Are they equal to the same rate as the people of Los Angeles?
That they pay exactly what the costs are to treat and transport their waste.
The calculation is slightly different, because part of their charge is based on the distance that we convey their sewage. So that, for instance, an agency like Burbank would pay more for conveyance than El Segundo. Whereas for our customers inside the city, we don't make those distinctions about how far they live from treatment plants.
Correct, I got that. But you mentioned Burbank, because I remember years ago in a debate that the council had, and it may have been the 1990 debate or whatever it was, Burbank had established rates back in, like, the 1920s. But these are all up to date now?
Yeah, two years ago, we brought in their new contract, they are now paying their fair share.
Members, why I would like to make sure that we express that to the 27 of the contract municipalities is because Los Angeles, as odd as our borders may be, we're an integrated municipal region. And we do share on all points, and I do want to express that to the others, because sometimes we do have challenges. We think Los Angeles gets a negative light, but Los Angeles helps a lot of cities in our municipal region, in our county. 27 is almost 23 percent of the 88 cities that are in the county. So I think that would be helpful, if you could look at that and let me know. And also, on this sewer rate chart here, that's a little hard to read here, do you have one that shows the Southern California area as opposed to, because this is a national...
It's the 50 largest cities, but we can draw out the ones in Southern California.
Southern California, because I appreciate it. And lastly, members, I may have mentioned this before in a debate, I once was in Lake O'Hare and ran into a county firefighter who told me he worked at Dockweiler Beach, and he worked there for years and years. And he said he finally started seeing dolphins again, and he thanked whatever we were doing at Hyperion. It is costly, but as Ed Reyes mentioned eloquently, it is something we got to do, because we are a region of people, and it is part of the system, and I just wanted to stand that. I do support looking for ways to be more equitable with people who provide housing, because the housing unit, a lot of them are mom-and-pop housing, we're not talking about large facilities, and maybe there's a way to decipher that too, because usually they have long-term tenants in smaller units than they do have in bigger properties. With that in mind, I just want to thank you for your hard work and to be focused, but get that information back. And could I just have a friendly amendment, or do I need amendment to ask that in the future?
We're going to take care of that.
Okay, that you would ask the other, that we treat part of the contracts that you notify, that the city of Los Angeles, or in the case of Glendale, we treat theirs because we are co-owners, whatever the case may be specifically, so that they know that we share that, because I think it helps build a stronger bond with our city and others. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Mr. President, let me just ask my last three questions. One thing, someone mentioned earlier about the ability to have separate water meters, but what I didn't hear is who's responsible for paying for them? Is that by the...
The homeowner would be responsible for paying for it, but it saves them money over the course of time.
Now, is that something that is well-advertised if someone should want to do that?
We send out a particular flyer on that once a year. We do have some other inserts throughout the year in our Water and Power bill that we send out.
Okay. The other issue, and I forget who said it, that we have, these are, our bond funding and our guest construction is being audited?
Yes.
Okay. Who does that? And is that, that's one area that evidently is not well-known, because people are used to now, when we get bonds out into the community on elections, they look at this citizen committee or someone. Is that something that's been publicized? Is the community well aware of who audits, and do we publish those audits?
I'm not sure if the public's aware, but we are audited by an outside firm, as well as we're subject to audits by the controller as well. But there is an annual outside audit from someone outside of the controller's office, as well as the controller's.
And what does that cover? What does that audit cover?
That covers the Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund, which is the funding source for the wastewater program. And so it looks at all the financial aspects, as far as the accounting, what our net gain or loss was during a particular year.
Does it cover it all, or evaluate the use of the money versus the construction, and whether we get the best bang for our buck?
No, it doesn't really get into that area. It's focused mainly just on the financial side, rather than how the money is being spent.
Because if we spent 3-plus billion dollars in sewer maintenance and improvements, it would appear that we want some kind of outside, excuse me, some kind of outside audit to say that we basically used our money to the best of our ability, or that we got 3-point-something billion dollars worth of sewers, or something that we can reflect to the community, that it's just not an open checkbook, that we float bonds and we need more sewers, and there's no review as whether we're getting the fair market value.
We've had internal audits by the controllers on those subject matters.
On those subjects?
With our other partner, which we're greatly grateful for as a Bureau of Engineering, there've been audits on both ends, of both how the funds are used by the controller's office that are available as well.
Okay, very good. And then, the last issue, I think, in the rates, we've updated them recently. Now, last time, I think, we talked about this, that the rates, I think, the contracts go multiple years. I think they were saying 10 years or something like that, or is it that long? For outside cities using...
It goes, it was 30 years as of 1999, so it's at the end of 30 years.
Is that something that we should reconsider, if so many things change and so dynamic, that someone's paying at a flat rate for that long a time, but yet, we are hitting...
Well, they're not paying a flat rate. They're paying that year's cost of moving their waste through our system and of treating...
By the cubic yard, okay. So they're being paid by what they use?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So that's something that, even though the contract is over time, they're paying their fair share.
Right, each year. Those parameters change.
All right, very good. Thank you for answering my question. Let me just make a couple of comments. One thing I would hope, and I think for the first time I've seen, the large number of property owners, most of them mom-and-pop stores, are apartment owners, and their faces look much like the city of Los Angeles, and I'd hope that we would seriously take into account, when we make these policy decisions, just what impact we make on them, particularly when they absorb most of this cost. And I would hope that, Eric, we can get that larger motion that we put forth a while back, asking that we look at the 3% to do a fairness issue, because they keep bringing us their bills, they keep bringing us their property tax, and they're talking about 100% increase, and just what we know today, 40% on sewer fees, 11% on water fees, and we're saying it should be absorbed in the 11, in the 3%, in the sense of rent stabilization. I think we need to look at the overall fairness, and also, in the sense that we won't have to do these incremental issues if we did it overall. And I understand that housing says they need some money to do it, and whatever we have to find, I think it would be a benefit. I don't know if there's anything 15-years-old that we would still rely on, in the sense of that kind of issue. And I just want to say to Martin, you know, when I heard your comment about being on the left, childbearing and marriage does that, it brings you to the center.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's pretty good, Bernard. One is, I understand, and I applaud OGLA for bringing up forward all their issues, but it's a very complicated one, in terms of how this is going to affect tenants. I understand they reflect the city, you can see the spectrum of folks, all cultures, languages, that are apartment owners, but when I also look at the tenants, I can help but think of how, for example, District 1 and other districts, where more than half, in some instances, those communities are living at a below poverty. We're talking about families, five years ago, surviving on $17,000 a year for a family of four. I'm not sure what the current figure is, but it's in that range. Yet, I have apartments being built, where a studio's $1,600 a month. So it keeps coming back to that tension, where we need to have our best and brightest look at these issues, how we break down this complexity. Maybe we create categories of property owners who are living at subsistence level, they just happen to be owning that property. How do we create a supplement? How do we create relief, so that the tenant who's going to be there is going to have to pop another $50, $100, $150, and start making choices? I already have seniors who, on a weekly basis, have to decide, "Do I eat regular food, or do I eat cat food or dog food?" I mean, these are the kinds of real issues that are happening to our seniors in our city. So let's keep working together, but assess these real impacts. And the tenants need to have the same type of rights, the same type of issues of accessibility as property owners, because they're all in the same community. And being able to work out those issues is going to be very, very difficult, but this is where we're going to have to be creative, this is where we're going to have to be very aggressive, and not leave any one group or stakeholder behind in this process. So again, I thank you, you've taken on a very hard task, and let's just keep working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's prepare for our vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion should be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, February 8th, to arrive at 10:40. That meets council policy, and that is for city business.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused February 22nd through March 8th, and those all meet council policy, and that is for vacation.
Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Perry also requests to be excused February 8th, 15, excuse me, 8th, 11th, 15th, and 16th, to arrive at 11, or to leave at 11:30, and to leave at 11:00 a.m. on the 15th, and those all meet council policy.
Those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Zion requests to be excused Friday, February 11th, to arrive at 10:40, Wednesday, February 16th and 23rd, to leave at 11:30, and Friday, February 18th, a motion is required for the excuses on the 18th and 23rd.
Okay, those excuses are granted as well.
And Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, July 8th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, before going into closed session, let me announce that Mr. Parks is recused on items 37, 39, and 40, so Mr. Parks will not be part of the closed session deliberation on those items. And if there's nothing further at this time, let's send item 1 forthwith, please. If there's nothing further at this time, then, in accordance with California law, the council now adjourns to closed session. Sargent, please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
Next item before council, item number 39, and that settlement in the case of Raul Rodriguez versus the city at all, and that's in the amount of $350,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item before council is item number 40, and that settlement in the case of Miguel Hernandez versus the city at all, and that's in the amount of $200,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved as well. Forthwith also.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, it's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Any announcements? If not, do we have any adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't bring all the details here, and I want to, there may be other colleagues that want to join in with me, but may do a further eulogy at another time, but as reported in the L.A. Times today, Jessica Govea passed away, and Jessica, who was really one of the very aggressive, very capable, very competent organizers in the United Farm Workers Movement, is someone that I had the pleasure of calling boss for a while. She was my supervisor during one of the biggest voter registration projects in the history of the country back 1987. And Jessica is an individual that just was an amazing force. Whenever she walked into the room, she was somebody who didn't have to say much. She wasn't a tall person, but when she spoke, she spoke with an amazing amount of authority and respect, from the Kennedys to the Chavez family, to just about any labor organizer who was worth their salt during the '80s and '90s, could say that they had spent some quality time learning from Jessica Govea. And I knew she'd been ill for quite some time. Marshall Gans, who many of you know and have heard about for years and years, was somebody that looked at Jessica for so much, so often, and we were really moved by the fact that she has been struggling with an illness for many, many years, and has overcome many dark days, and unfortunately succumbed to the illness recently. And so I ask that we remember Jessica Govea, a real giant soldier in the fight for social and economic justice, and somebody that will be greatly missed.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.